Thanks, Mayor. A couple of members of the gallery just entering, but councillors, we are at six o'clock, so we are going to start our meeting now. We'll start by standing for the opening prayer and the recognition of the traditional landholders. The opening prayer: "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name; thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for the kingdom, the power, and the glory are yours now and forever." Amen. I'd like to acknowledge that today we are meeting here on the traditional lands of the Brakalong people of the Gunnai Kernai nation, and I pay my respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. If there are any other elders here today, I'd also like to acknowledge them. Councillors, you can be seated and we can start. As we have a number of people in the gallery this evening, it's worthwhile noting the conditions of entry into this council meeting, that all members of the community attending the council meeting must behave in an orderly fashion, as do the councillors, and at any time the Chair, which is myself, can ask anyone to leave, including a councillor, if they disrupt the meeting or fails to comply with the direction. This evening, we are live streaming via YouTube, as our council meetings are, which will capture the vision forward of that lectern and won't capture anyone's image behind that lectern. So if anyone's sitting in the gallery, you won't be seen, but if anyone's speaking this evening, your voices will be recorded, but as I believe there are no speakers tonight, that won't be a matter for this evening. The recordings of council meetings are at the discretion of the Chair. No one has requested to record the council meeting, and as is our local law, we won't be recording any of the council meeting apart from the YouTube recording, which goes out live to the public. Councillors, any apologies for this evening? It seems that everyone's present, so we'll just record that all councillors are present for this evening's meeting. Item four on our agenda is declarations of interest, as an opportunity for councillors to declare if they have an interest or a conflict in any item on the agenda this evening. Councillor Harriman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have an indirect conflict on item 15.6, which is the roads rehabilitation programme. Part of it mentions the roadworks that's already started between the Highway and Gariboli Street on Lafayette Street. I live relatively close to that, so I'll declare an indirect interest there. Also, Mr. Mayor, it has been brought up that I may have a conflict on item 14.1. I have sought advice, I do not, but in the interests of transparency, I will be vacating the room for item 14.1.
Thanks, Councillor Harriman. Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to declare an indirect interest in item 15.6, because that includes my road too.
Thanks, Councillor Gibson. Anyone else need to declare an interest, direct or indirect, at this time? If there is anything that pops up through the agenda through the evening that you notice, councillors, you can declare at that time as well. We move to the adoption of the minutes. This is from the 2nd of December 2019. Councillor Gibson, happy to move? Happy to move. We have a mover. Do we have a second? Councillor Howe is the second. Just mark that down. Councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe. Any opposition to this? All in favour? There's no opposition, we'll just pass that one as four. Thank you very much, councillors. We move to item six in the agenda, which is the acknowledgements. This is an opportunity for councillors to raise formal acknowledgements, that they can be made for our community and members of our community as well. Councillor O'Callaghan, I know you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make an acknowledgement. Can I check that mic's alright there?
Seems to be working.
That's right. No, that's right, just I can't move it from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make an acknowledgement on behalf of council to those communities impacted by the recent fires in East Gipsland and further afield, and we'd also like to express our most sincere condolences to the families and friends of those who were lost, both as a direct impact of the fire emergency, but also those who were lost in fighting of those fires over that period of time. We'd like to acknowledge the fire crews and allied response agencies, who have given an overwhelming level of commitment and support, not only to the organisations that they work for, but to communities far and wide, not only across East Gipsland, but across a range of states who have been impacted by fire most recently. Wanted to thank those who've assisted in the immediate response, but also to those who are now undertaking the subsequent recovery that's taking place in communities. It is a significant body of work, it will take a significant period of time, and we know that there are a great deal of resource and support available to those communities, and we wish them well with their recovery. I did want to acknowledge our staff, who have been actively engaged, not only in the firefight, many of them as volunteers with CFA and a range of other organisations, but also those who attended on behalf of Lutrob City to support our neighbouring municipalities and organisations during the recent emergency. It's very clear that our community's been overwhelmingly generous during this bushfire event, through their donations of their time, through their support for community, but also through the contributions they've made to GRF, but also through physical donations, food, and other support that they provided to be distributed directly to East Gipsland. So I just wanted to thank everyone who's been involved, acknowledge those communities who continue to experience a level of distress and have a significant body of work ahead of them as the recovery effort continues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councillor O'Callaghan. Are there any other councillors who wish to make an acknowledgement? Councillor Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge the Gipsland Motorcycle Social Club and the Hartwell Racing Club for the huge effort they did in organising and putting on the Motor Fest 2020 event down at Mid Valley. It was an overwhelming success. It was a free event for the Lutrob City community, and I've just found out it's the first time an outdoor track of that kind has been put on the road or on the public land in Victoria. So, great success, and hopefully they'll be back next year bigger and better.
Thank you very much, Councillor Howe. Councillor Law.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, this is especially to our outdoor staff and event staff. We had the BBL final game at Tedsummiton just the weekend before Christmas, and to all our staff that put in a tremendous amount of work and effort. It was a great day and certainly provided Lutrob City with another great outcome. So to all our staff, thank you very much.
Thanks, Councillor Law. Councillor Harriman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge two local basketballers, Emerson Davini and Christian Dandelo. Both are Trelgyn amateur basketball teabird players, they've both played for Lutrob City Energy, and both have been selected in the under-18 state basketball team to compete at the national championships, and they're in the under-18s this year. They've been picked most years all the way through their career, and I just thought it's an outstanding success. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Harriman. Any other councillors make an acknowledgement at this time? Councillor White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to concur with the remarks made by Councillor O'Callaghan in relation to the situation in relation to the bushfires in East Gipsland in particular, but even into New South Wales as well, and also to reinforce the remarks in relation to the community response to that situation and the outpouring of support in both intangible ways and also particularly through the financial support that's come through. It's absolutely brilliant, and so, and of course, the role that Gipsland Emergency Relief Fund, the GRF, has been professionally known, has played in terms of responding without delay to those directly affected, has been tremendous, and so, well done to all. And of course, it is continuing, you know, and that's the thing that's really need to understand, that the response is going to be a long-term one that's required in order to be able to get through this. I also wanted Mr. Mayor to take this opportunity to acknowledge a lady by the name of Sue Kiladaback, who is an audiologist from here in Mawr, who actually lives in Ballara, but she was acknowledged with an OAM at the recent honours, and so, congratulations to Sue, and she's been a great advocate for those who are hearing impaired, et cetera, and so, her efforts in that regard have been acknowledged, and so, congratulations.
Thank you, Councillor White. Any other councillors like to make an acknowledgement? Question?
In the awards, wasn't there the Maui Anglikun?
I think there was, actually.
Yes, who got an acknowledgement for Australia Day Awards.
Australia Day nod.
So if we can get the proper wording for that, that would be great.
A bit of research there to add that, yes. Thanks, Councillor Gibson. No other councillors for acknowledgements? Thank you, councillors. Quite a few acknowledgements tonight, but it has been a couple of months since we've met, so that's very good. We move to item seven on our agenda, which is public participation time for those in the gallery and for those streaming live at home. The public participation time is broken into two sections. One is the public questions on notice, which is, in accordance with our council meeting policy, members can lodge a question on notice before 12:00 today, in order for the question to be answered at the meeting. Now, these are addressed by the CEO. The second part of our public participation time is where public speakers can come and speak to the lectern, but also that needs to be done by 12:00 on the council meeting day, and we haven't had any registered speakers tonight for this agenda. So, Mr. CEO, I think we have a question that has been lodged with you in writing.
We do.
Mr. Mayor, as I've indicated, I'm leaving the room for this item.
Thanks, Councillor Harriman. Just wait, Mr. CEO, while Councillor Harriman leaves.
Just the question's for Mr. Ken O'Dowd, I just want to check that he's in the gallery. Yes? And that's important, is that if the person isn't in the gallery, we do often just defer to write to them afterwards, but giving you here, Mr. O'Dowd. So the question, sorry, the topic is in relation to rezoning of land in C115 Morwell, so it's a planning scheme amendment for the Trelgyn corridor. The question is the land being rezoned from farming land to residential land on the property known as Holydale, and the question is, are the councillors aware that the land to be rezoned is directly under the flight path of aircraft at the Lutrob Valley Regional Airport? And so in response, my staff have provided some details. So this particular parcel of land between Morwell and Trelgyn, locally known as the Holydale site, is not actually currently being rezoned as part of this planning scheme amendment, C115. That land recognises as Holydale is, however, identified as an area for future residential development, and the proximity of the airport and associated impacts will need to be considered as part of any future planning scheme amendment if this land is to be rezoned.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. That question and the answer will be lodged into the minutes of this meeting, and if there's any follow-up which can be made to the CEO directly. So thank you very much for that. We might return, Councillor Harriman, as that question did relate to the item agenda that he had declared an interest on. Walked out at the wrong time? It was only a question, and the question and answer will be noted in the minutes, so you'll have an opportunity to read that. We move to item eight on our agenda, which is items carried over, reports, consideration on notice, there are known this evening that come before us. So we move to nine on our agenda, which is notices of motion, and we have one. Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving.
Thank you. Have a second for this notice of motion. Councillor Law? Have any objections? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those who don't go over to Maui very often, this has been a bugbear for the community for a number of years. Now, in the past, for those who've been here for a bit longer... Whose is it?
Mine's off, so it's not me.
All right, no worries. In the past, I have put motions up about this and have asked, okay, is it surplus to needs? That has gone back, and the Department of Justice have said, no, we still need it. Now, that was a number of years ago. In that time, it's hardly been utilised at all. It is now utilised for behaviour that we wish it wasn't being utilised for, and it deteriorates all the more. So I'm putting it back to the Minister and the Department of Justice to inform us exactly which way they wish to go with this property, because if they're going to keep it, maintain it. If they're not going to utilise it, okay, can we look at, is there a community group or whatever who wish to utilise this, so it can actually attract people into our area? A destination by choice? That's the type of thing we would love to see, so we can actually have something to be proud of, not a derelict building, which is something that we're all very passionate about eliminating. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Our second to Councillor Law, would you like to speak to this? Any other councillors who would like to speak to this, either for or against this motion? No other councillor speaking, Councillor Gibson, you have a chance to close the argument. No? No other speakers? Then we put this to the voters, we have had speakers. Councillors, those in favour of this? Say that that is unanimous, and that has been carried by all councillors, including myself. Thank you very much, Councillor Gibson, for that notice of motion. We move to 10. There are no items referred to this meeting. 11, which is correspondence, there are nil reports. 12, which is a presentation of petitions, there are nil reports for this February meeting. We move to the Chief Executive Office, there are nil reports there either. Jump over to item 14.1.
This time, I'll get it right, Mr. Mayor, and I'm leaving the room.
14.1, we'll say. Councillor Harriman, thank you. Item 14.1, now that Councillor Harriman has left the room, is the Planning Scheme Amendment of C114, Trelgyn North Strip Rezoning and Draft Trelgyn North Development Plan Update. It's on the screen behind me. Councillors, do I have a mover for this? Councillor Howe is moving? Have a second. Councillor Law is the second. Have any opposition? Councillor Howe, would you like to speak to this?
Mr. Mayor, this is a minor amendment. What it's doing is bringing rezoning three properties on the edge of the Trelgyn North development, from farming to general residential. It's also cleaning up a couple of other little things. It's rezoning the south-east corner to commercial one, so we can have the approval for a supermarket and some specialty shops. It's also changing the location of the retarding basins, sewer pumps, and the overflow path and outfall sewers. This was put on public notice for weeks. We've got nine submissions all supporting the project. That included submissions from our major partners such as West Gipsland CMA, Department of Transport, SO, and the EPA. The positive thing is it'll add more developable land for Trelgyn, and it'll also drop the net developer contribution by approximately $6,000 per net developable hectare. After this, it'll move down to the Minister for Planning for consideration. Hopefully, he'll approve it and move it forward. All in all, pretty minor change, I think, but good for Trelgyn.
Thank you, Councillor Howe. Councillor Law, do you wish to speak? All been said. Is there any other councillor who wish to speak to this motion, either for or against? No, Councillor Howe, you have a chance to close? Okay. And as we've had a speaker, we need to put this to the vote, all in favour? Yes, so that's carried unanimously with myself as well. Thank you very much. Councillors, we can bring Councillor Harriman back in the room as we move to 14.2. Thanks, Councillor Harriman. I hope you haven't damaged the biscuit barrel too much while you've been out of the room. We're moving to 14.2 for your information, Councillor Harriman. This is a draft submission for the Lutrob Valley Regional Rehabilitation Strategy Overview. Councillor Middlemas, moving. Do I have a second? Oh, Councillor Gibson just beat you to it, Ken. Thank you very much. Any opposition to this? Councillor Middlemas, your floor.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, perhaps I should start by stating that I am council's representative on the Ministerial Advisory Committee on Mine Rehabilitation, but what this report, which council hopefully is about to adopt, points out is that much of the debate around mine rehabilitation has been around what the mining companies want, and they certainly want to get out with a quick, fill the mines with water and let's get out of here. I can understand the reasons for doing that, but the real issue is, is the water available? What will the effect on the environment be? I understand that the Lutrob River over the last 20 years has dropped in its flow by 15%. The pressure to close brown coal power stations means that instead of the mines closing 10, 15 years apart, they all might tumble together within a one, 10-year period. So what we're looking for, for a community, is a safe outcome, but one that doesn't deprive our community of the future use of the available water. You may have seen recently, in the last week or two, there's been a great deal of debate and discussion around this in the media. You may have seen recently, in the last week or two, there's been a great deal of debate and discussion around this in the media. So council is effectively saying, let's have an environmental effects statement. Let's understand, is the water available? Is the water model safe? Because for one of the mines, the town is perched right on the edge of it, and that's Morwell. So much more work needs to be done at the government level as to what the future for mine rehabilitation is. And this report spells that out.
Thank you councillor Middlemas. Councillor Gibson, you're a second.
Thank you, yes, I did. And let's face it, filling the pit lake with water is the cheapest, quickest way for the company. And I'm trying to understand why the government's been going along with that. Because it's supposed to be here for the community. Now, that's not helping us. We see about the effects of water, have we got enough? Is it going to impede in Gipsland Lakes, all of those issues? But they haven't been addressed. And people, government have just been going along with this. And I think considering that the valley has actually underpinned the state for how many years, is it 100 years or whatever, with the cheapest power? I think we deserve a bit more than the cheapest, quickest way to fill it when it's not the best for our community. So I'm happy to support this because I agree.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Are there any other speakers to this motion? For or against? No? Certainly can councillor White.
I just rise to support the content of the submission that has been made on our behalf in line with the deadlines that were put upon us. And I think that the document we have before us this evening, that's been prepared for us by our team, does the job. And clearly there are significant issues that still need to be further considered, I think, in terms of how the mine voiders, we talk about it these days, might best be managed for the long term. And I think that the discussion most recently is about the water capacity and/or the capacity of having sufficient water around to be able to fill the void and obviously without impacting on the river system, et cetera. And it's just not there. But on the other hand, we do know that at a federal government level, there's conversations going on about, in Australia, we need more dams. And so there's an element of that in it too. But I think that for now, I think that there's a real challenge there that I think that we're really relying, we're in a position where we as a council are relying on the state government of the day to really be very cognisant of the situation that we live within here and to make sure that any thinking and decision-making that goes forward is in the best interest of this municipality.
Thank you councillor White. Any other speakers to this? So there has been speakers, we do need to put this to the vote, so all councillors in favour? Oh, sorry, to close the argument councillor Middlemas. Would you just like to take the moment to say something? Because I apologise for not giving you that opportunity. Humble apologies. All right, then we will put it to the vote then. So all in favour unanimously across the board. Thank you very much councillors. Moving to 14.3 on the agenda, which is an amendment to C115, which is different to C114, C115. Okay. This is the amendment to C114, which is the Morwell to Torregan Employment Corridor Consideration for the Planning Panel Report. Do I have a mover? Councillor Middlemas, I'll take you as a mover on that. And councillor McFarlane as a second. Any opposition to this councillors? Opposition? Councillor Middlemas, would you like to speak to this? No? Councillor McFarlane, would you like to speak to this?
Well, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, just to restate a couple of things that the report does say. We've been through a process with a panel hearing where consideration of a fairly complex plan for our future along the corridor was considered. That panel hearing submissions were heard and the panel has now made their recommendation. And this process now puts the matter back to for adoption. And then we move forward and we've got some structure to aim towards for the future of the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Any other speakers? Councillor Middlemas, I'll give you the opportunity to close. Thank you, as there have been speakers, we do need to vote on it, so all those in favour unanimously. Thank you very much councillors. We're moving to 15.1, which is the Moi Olympic Reserve Soccer Pitch. Councillor Gibson, I note you, as you're moving. Thank you. And a second to councillor Law. Any opposition to this councillors? No? Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As this is going to the LVA, it's mandatory that they need to have somebody, the council, to auspice the project. So that's why this is coming before us now. And if anybody has actually been out to that field, it finally is what I've got written in my report, finally, because the lights are all about safety. Technical hitch, thank you. It really needs to occur. So I'm delighted that it's finally before us. But I also note on page 499, the club's proposal is to replace lighting to the main field only as there is unlikely to be sufficient funding to do both fields. However, if the opportunity presents itself, such as retaining the existing pole and reusing another pole, if consistent with the LVA application and funds allow, then lighting in some forward form for the back pitch will be looked at. So again, it's about safety for the kids, especially on the back pitch. And it's been a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Gibson. Councillor Law, would you like to speak to this?
Just to follow on, yeah, it's certainly needed by the soccer club. They've been very progressive at Moi there. And they've done a lot of work to their own facilities and that using their own funds. And this is just a further enhancement to the precinct. And I just hope that the LVA can support it and then we naturally can follow suit. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Law. Are there any other speakers to this? No other speakers? Councillor Gibson, would you like to close? No? You're very happy? All right, then we put it to the voters, there's been speakers, all those in favour? All hands up? Myself is unanimous. Thank you very much councillors. We move to 15.2, which is the Gipsland Tracks and Trails Strategy. Councillor Gibson, I note you. Moving? Thank you very much. Second. Councillor Howe, seconding. Any opposition to this?
Sorry. Endorses in principle.
So you'd like just an amendment rather than an alternate?
Yeah, just an amendment.
Does that change, Mr. CEO, I prefer to that, does that change the?
Intent?
No. No. Doesn't change the intent? No. So can we put amendment, sorry, in principle? It does?
One's an action, the other's just an intention, so are we actually endorsing it?
We can.
I guess the question is, are there questions about it?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
So we'll run it as an alternate rather than, so an alternate motion? Happy with that? All right. So at the moment, I've got a mover and a second on the motion, so would you just like to rescind that, would you? Can we do that? Or would you like to foreshadow an alternate?
I think we are tying ourselves in a knot. To make it easier, councillor has moved the resolution. I'll second it and point out why we might should have some reservations about it.
Okay, so I've got a second from councillor Howe, but you can certainly speak to, yeah? You're happy with that? As it's been put? All right.
The question was just asked as to whether it did.
No, no.
Don't want to go with the in principle and everyone's comfortable, then it can.
We can make an amendment to the resolution that's been put to us if it doesn't change the intent of the resolution. And if we say, you know, in principle, then does it change the intent? Then we say it does. All right, so we just want to talk to it and then put on record. Is that what you'd like to do councillor Middlemas?
We tie ourselves in a knot. There's a mover of the recommendation.
Yep.
I'm happy for it, we moved and seconded.
Yep.
And I will speak to my reservations and speaking to.
Great. Great, lovely. So we're taking out the words in principle and leaving it as it is in the agenda? Yep, the original. Endorses the Gipsland Tracks and Trails Strategy. And councillors will speak to that. Thanks for working that through. So I have a mover in councillor Gibson and councillor Howe as a second. Any opposition to this? Opposition councillor Middlemas, I'll just note that for the record. Thank you. Councillor Gibson, your motion, if you'd like to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't getting so much. But look, I was happy to move this motion because part of this, and from what I gather, unless I'm going to get some further information soon, is this is part of a larger picture. And it's all about tourism to the community. We first came off the rank with the Gipsland Mountain Bike Clubs or the Mountain Bike Park that's being constructed very soon. So that's the jewel in the crown of this trail, which is all about tourism for our community. And when you have these type of tracks, trails, it actually does. It drags a lot of people into our community. If you look at up in the north-east of the States, that's what underpins a hell of a lot of the economy for the likes of Mount Beauty, Bright. It's all around this type of event. So if you have the actual trails, the people will come. And as I say, that actually underpins their whole economy.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe as a second. Reserve. Are there any other speakers to this motion? Councillor Middlemas is. Yes, you were.
Councillors, what I wanted in principle was simply to give us the wriggle room to reinforce that there are better options than contained in this report by Gipsland Tracks and Trails Strategy. We've had to insert the what I call Helen's Trail, Gipsland Plains Rail Trail. We've had to insert that in there, yet it's the major rail trail in Gipsland and is one that will probably, as it develops, attract far more. But it wasn't in there, it's the main focus. We're putting it in. But what my concern is, we have a rail trail, quite a good one, from Murbu North to Balarra. We have the Balarra community working on some plans to continue the rail trail from Balarra to Yunnar, even though we may have to go out beside the road at one or two points. And then the thing just deteriorates on page 61 of the report into a blue mats with dots around it, simply because they can't get past the Hazelwood Complex. Well, let's face it, shortly we'll be discussing with Hazelwood what are the future uses. So one of the easiest things that can go into there is a bicycle trail. And what that'll do, that would mean that you could ride from Murbu North to the end of the Gipsland Plains Rail Trail, which I think is the aim is matter in the end, is it? Stratford, Stratford. So if we, you know, if you have a quick glance at 61, what I said in principle is, I want us to be able, if the Balarra community come back and say, yes, we've got the path from Balarra to Yunnar, and then will you negotiate with Onji from Yunnar into Morwell? We've got the Torregan, the Morwell to Torregan path to be opened. You were talking about it recently, it's quite close. Yeah, in a couple of weeks' time. And then straight on to the Gipsland Rail Trail. So by, just suggesting the term in principle, I want us to have the room still to say, hey, we're fairly close here. We've got some good ideas, we think we'll get it up. So that's all I was saying, just leave us a bit more wriggle room. We've had to buy wriggle room by saying to them, ooh, what about the Gipsland Plains Rail Trail? You didn't include it. You know, there's no emphasis in there, it is marked on it, but no great effort. And that is the best one. And I understand what councillor Gibson's saying about the mountain bike stuff, that's going to be fabulous. But what I was suggesting is a bit of wriggle room, I'm happy to go ahead like that. But just keep in the back of mind that I'll be advocating that if the opportunity does to connect Murbu North to Morwell, Torregan, just about to be done, and then Torregan to Stratford, we should jump at it.
Thank you councillor Middlemas. Are there any other speakers? The question through to the CEO?
Thank you. What, okay, if we endorse this as is, can we or can't we actually address what councillor Middlemas is saying? Or what is the process to actually do that place?
Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I suppose the endorsement of the strategy as it stands highlights in the reporting, it says a whole range of initial initiatives that would be delivered. But there are a number of other projects that would be delivered in the future, such as the connection that councillor Middlemas is talking about. I suppose it's probably not the initial initiatives that would be delivered as part of the advocacy for funding to deliver projects from the programme. So, and the plan that councillor Middlemas did refer to identifies as a zone under which there would be plans in the future developed to provide a connection is what the intent of the strategy is aiming for. But it wouldn't be as part of the first part of the project. You see, there's a whole range of initial initiatives in there, as I said, that would be the first ones that the group of councils, GLGN effectively, would advocate for to be delivered.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so if the, whoever it be, Balarra, Murbu North, actually get the, do the work and have funds for it, they can't leapfrog, is that what you're saying?
No, no. What I'm suggesting through, Mr. Mayor, is that the list of initial projects in that list and in the report would be the ones that would be the first calves off the rank in terms of funding allocations. But if the community were to develop plans and work towards delivering another project, they could equally seek funding from the government for that to be delivered. And so those projects could run in parallel. But the priority for the Gipsland councils, as you can see in the report, is those higher level projects that were identified.
Thank you.
Safe to say that the report doesn't exclude new opportunities. Thank you councillor Gibson for the question. Councillor White, speak to this.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I am happy to speak to this in a particular, in a general sense. But I think that the thing that intrigues me, and I'm really supporting the second on point there, rise to Gipsland Local Government Network advocating conclusion, Gipsland Plains Rail Trail is a signature trail. I note that in our report that it talks about the fact that the Gipsland Plains Rail Trail and the trail from Murbu North to Balarra that councillor Middlemas talked about have been assessed as regional slash local level trails. But for goodness sake, for me, just looking at the website of the Gipsland Plains Rail Trail, it extends for 63km from Torregan to Stratford. The trail passes through high quality dairy country and offers panoramic views of the great dividing range to the north and sweeping 360-degree views across the great Gipsland Plains. There's a history of vibrant wineries, contemporary restaurants and cafes, exciting specialty shops and much more to discover on your Gipsland Plains Rail Trail adventure. And the other significant factor is that the Gipsland Plains Trail is unique as visitors can easily connect by V-line train from Melbourne or Banzdale to either end of the trail. That is, either jumping, starting their journey from Torregan or starting their journey from Stratford. And so that the trail is perfect for weekend short breaks with most small townships along the route offering clean, comfortable and affordable accommodation. Surely to me, that really meets the criteria of a significant rail trail and ought to be considered. and ought to be considered in the context of the overall vision for the Gipsland Tracks and Trails Strategy. And, and it really needs to be recognised in the document, the final document that is produced to, to not be something that's sort of sitting on the side there, that may be considered at some stage, but have been there front and centre. And I know that, that the folk who have been involved, and the thing that surprised me a little bit, I suppose, is our neighbours, Wellingtonshire, that they haven't actually acknowledged, it would appear, that they haven't given the, a, a significant recognition in relation to this report. But, so, but the other thing I wanted to particularly mention was that the name Helen Hopner has been mentioned already tonight, and what a stalwart she's been for this Gipsland Plains Rail Trail. And with all the fact that support her as volunteers to achieve what they've been able to achieve so far is absolutely brilliant, and it ought to be acknowledged in this document.
Thank you councillor White. Are there any other speakers for or against this motion? Councillor Harriman?
Mr Mayor, I'm just gonna, in case this motion is defeated, just foreshadow another motion.
Sure, thank you.
Just in case.
Any other councillors wish to speak? Councillor Howe, you're reserved, do you have a chance to, opportunity now to speak?
I think this is a great initiative from the three groups that put it together, being GLGN, Destination Gipsland, and the Gipsland Motor Bi, Mountain Bike Club. Apparently there's people out there that enjoy riding bikes without motors. Don't quite understand it personally, but, no, it is, it is a great, it's a great avenue for tourism. I know that people now, they plan their holidays around, they put the bikes on and they plan their holiday around riding the tracks and the trails. I think to take the planning and the development to a higher level, so it covers all of Gipsland, is a great move. It will mean that we won't get everything we want all the time, because the, the need of the many will override the need of us. But we can still advocate on behalf of our own small towns and, and ideas. Yeah, it makes sense, you can develop it at a, at a Gipsland level, you can market it at a Gipsland level. I think it's a great initiative and I fully support it.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Gibson, as the, I'll just check if there's any other speakers, but I don't think, I've exhausted councillor Gibson. You can have your opportunity to close.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I take on board what my fellow councillors are stating. And I wouldn't like to see them lose out those trails that we're talking about. I, I get that. So whether we pass this as is or put in principle, but I wouldn't like to miss what we've got now. So, I, I understand what you're saying. Whether we can do it without putting in principle there, I'm not certain. So, let it go to the vote.
Let it go to the vote, thank you very much. As we have had speakers, we do need to vote. So as the motion stands at the moment as written, those in favour? Councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor White, councillor O'Callaghan and myself, those against, councillor Middlemas and councillor Harriman. That has passed as it is. Thanks for that councillors.
Mr Mayor, on the next item, fifteen-three.
Fifteen-three, yep.
Yeah, I'm going to declare a, an interest, a direct interest in this one. And so, conflict in judy, so I guess it's gotta be, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor White has declared a direct interest and is leaving the room at fifteen-three.
I've got to amend it.
Sorry?
Just want to put up an amendment to it if I can.
Okay, I've got a question, I'm not moving, I'm happy to move it.
No, no, yeah, yeah, I've got an amendment to make.
Just quick, yep, we'll just wait for councillor White to, he has left the building, so.
Could we page down please? Number five, that's the amendment.
I thought I understood this motion completely, I read it twice, and I just glanced at it then and I thought, oh, I'm lost. Number five, I think that applies to Moor, doesn't it? And I caught you. So I caught you in it.
Yes, you're correct, Crinigan Road is not in Troggen, it is in Moor, so we can fix that.
Yeah, so I am correct in saying that that's Latrobe City Sports and Entertainment Stadium in Moor.
Yep.
So, could the officers adjust the recommendation? I take it it's just a clerical area?
It is, yes, yep, absolutely.
So I'm happy to move it, but I hear there's an amendment, so.
No, I'll sit back. It's just to change it from Troggen to Moor.
Oh, okay, on that basis, I'll move the motion.
You've moved it and amended it, and we have a mover in councillor Middlemas. Do I have a seconder?
Give a second at, Mr Mayor?
Councillor Harriman, do you have any opposition to this resolution? Our position is councillor Middlemas, is all yours.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Once again, I should perhaps point out that I chair the project preference group for Latrobe City Sports and Entertainment Stadium, which features fairly heavily in this process. What we're looking at here is our assessment of the, shall we say, the, the seven most pressing recreation projects facing us in the coming year, and the ones we should seek funding for. I've learnt my lesson, I would have loved to have stuck in principle in the front of it, because I know there's another one on the horizon, which is probably going to jump the list, but we'll play that later. But this is the collective wisdom of our staff, and hopefully after this vote, the councillors, as to what are the seven most pressing recreational projects for the coming year, and the ones we should seek funding for. So basically, this just endorses this list.
Thanks councillor Middlemas. Councillor Harriman as the seconder?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, I just want to point out, this is a great concept that was brought out by the council, that we come up with a recreational needs assessment matrix. And what it does, it looks at the needs, the usage, the condition, the number of participants, and works out from those what's the most pressing need for this area. So it's not based on, on connections that they've got to the council, it's not based on councillor bias, it's done by the officers. It's done on a, on a, a matrix that is, that is consistent across all sporting facilities. And once that has been done, these are the seven most pressing and most in need and most of need sites that we've got. So I'm very, very happy to put this forward, it's been great in previous years that we've had a, had a number of projects from across the board come up. And again, I think this is a great way for council to actually work out what is, what is in need, and have an open and transparent way of doing it. So I fully endorse this.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Any other speakers? Councillor McFarlane?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd just like to clarify one thing. I mean, the seven projects here have been identified through the assessment process as the projects in greatest need. There is no guarantee that those projects will be funded for next year. They, they are currently the seven projects, and as funds become available, then we'll work the way through the list. But there was, I just wouldn't like our community to, to expect that these projects will be undertaken next year. They will be undertaken as, as funding's available, thank you.
Thanks councillor McFarlane. Councillor Gibson, just a question to the CEO?
Yes, please. Okay, we do all of this by a matrix. So the ones that are next off the list, they should come to the top, is that correct, please?
So, you might recall councillors, this process was undertaken a number of years ago, and each year we've updated it. So these are the, the current priorities. If these projects, for example, were funded, then the next list of projects would, would rise up, they'd need to be reevaluated, things do change over time. And that's the reason why we do it each year, just to assess the numbers and where the participation alike is at, that drives some of the, the scoring in relation to which projects are the highest priority. So those projects would eventually come to the top if they, if all things being equal, and if these were funded in, in a future year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this motion councillors? No? And councillor Middlemas have an opportunity to close?
I think I should just reinforce what councillor McFarlane said. This is our priority list, this will be the basis of our applications for funding, but there is absolutely no guarantee that we'll get funding. This is the officers' assessment of what the priorities are. And as the CEO says, they will change from time to time. But snapshot tonight is that should be our priorities for 2019, that's what we'll go and seek funding for. But perhaps now Bridget Mackenzie's gone, we might get a better go.
A slight swipe at the end there councillor Middlemas. As we have had speakers for this motion, we, we need to put this to the vote. So all councillors who are in favour, councillor McFarlane, councillor Middlemas, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, that is unanimous, sorry councillors, I started going around and we were all there. So that has been passed unanimously at fifteen-three. So fifteen-four is the next one. We'll get councillor White back in the room before we hear from you councillor Harriman.
Go much quicker if you left him outside.
I don't think so. Yeah, he did say the same thing about you.
I was gonna say, I would expect no less, Mr Mayor.
Have you been in the Vicky barrel too?
No, I haven't, no, full up to dinner, trying to die.
Councillor White, for your information, we've moved to fifteen-four, which is local sport infrastructure funding. Councillors, do I have a mover on this?
Moving an alternate if I may.
Alternate councillor Harriman?
Second the alternate, Mr Mayor.
All right, the alternate, I presume is on the screen behind me? Yep, there it is. All right, this just adds in one extra which had been discussed through our briefing process last week. Everyone had a chance to read the alternate, just don't want to rush forward if people haven't had a chance to read that. Councillor Harriman? I should ask if there's any opposition to this alternate before we move forward.
That's the alternate, there weren't any originally, that got changed.
All right, councillor Harriman?
Sorry, Mr Mayor.
An opportunity to speak, you can explain.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, the reason I put up an alternate is, originally the Troggen, table, Troggen Tennis Association was in there. How they'd outlined their project did not meet the guidelines and it was dropped out. Since a week ago, they have changed their guidelines, we're not sure whether they, the new project actually fits or doesn't fit. If it's not in this, then we can't take it forward, whether it fits or not. So the alternative is to put it in there so that we can reevaluate what has changed over the period of two weeks, from it being in, being out, being back in, so that we can evaluate it. It needs to go to a number of other bodies other than this council to see whether it, it is, whether it fits the guidelines. So this just gives the officers a chance to progress that, to see whether it does fit. It has no effect on the work that obviously needs to be done at Yalaw and Yalaw North, we're able to put two up. So it just brings it into the fold, so that it, if it does meet the criteria and the guidelines, then it is available for funding. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much for that councillor Harriman. Councillor Middlemas?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm very happy to see the Troggen Tennis Association back in there, with perhaps a chance to allow us to reassess their, their application. The other one is Yalaw and Yalaw North Football Club. Certainly, since the closure of Hazelwood, there's been a lot of government funding for facilities right up and down the valley. Unfortunately, everybody I think forgets Yalaw, Yalaw North is there. It appears to, many people's thinking a bit out of the way, but netball facilities up there are appalling. They're the worst facilities in the league. And it is, it's great to be able to support an application to upgrade those facilities.
Thank you very much councillor Middlemas. Are there any other speakers for or against this motion as it's been put? Councillor Harriman, an opportunity to close?
I will just close, Miss Bell, just, just to, to reiterate councillor Middlemas's actual point that Yalaw and Yalaw North netball is in diabolical stage. Just to put it into perspective, the netball players do not have a toilet next to their courts, they do not have a change room. They're currently changing in an Adco hut that has windows in it, that they're trying to board up, does not have lighting. It's starting to fall down because it's been there so long. This is a priority that is desperate for funding. And I have, fully, fully agree with councillor Middlemas that it's the worst facilities, I don't think only in the league, probably across all of Gipsland, for netballers that they've had to put up with, they've had to put up with it for a long time. I think it's only fair that we push for funding for it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Harriman. As we've had speakers, we need to put this to the voters, the motion's been put, all those in favour? Look around the room, that has been carried unanimously, thank you councillors. We're moving to fifteen-five, which is endorsement of a forty K speed limit zone for Moor, Moi and Troggen. Councillor McFarlane as a mover, councillor Howe, Notew as a seconder. Are there any opposition to this resolution? No. Councillor McFarlane, speaker?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this discussion on this issue has been before the council over the last twelve months, where we're, through this resolution tonight, we're endorsing a forty kilometre zone within our three major towns, predominantly around the CBDs. Through this process, Mr Mayor, council will hopefully be successful in securing two point six million dollars to follow the programme on, which will enable treatments to occur within those forty kilometre zones that really acknowledge vehicles versus pedestrians and, and whilst not always giving priority to pedestrians, at least slowing the trapping and the treatments will make it easier and safer for those pedestrians moving through our CBDs. So this is really the second step, given the, the information we received last year. This is the second step in the process, and once that happens, the formal application will go into the safe travel in local streets programme. And hopefully we'll be successful in securing two point six million dollars for our ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Councillor Howe as a seconder, have an opportunity to speak now?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, I'll just speak mainly on what's happening in Troggen. Hundred percent support it. What it effectively does is, if you're driving five hundred metres, it'll add an extra fifteen seconds to your journey. So put that in some context, if you turn into Breed Street, by the time you get to Gray Street, it's going to take you an extra fifteen seconds. So what, what's that for? Okay, in our CBD, we have two primary schools, we have a kindergarten or preschool, we have several doctors' clinics and other special, other medical specialists, and we've got a new aquatic centre coming on board later this year, early next year. So, our pedestrians are, they're going to be kids, juniors, and the elderly. So what it does is makes it safer for them, this ties in with our, with our road safety plan that we endorsed last year. It's safer roads, safer speeds, safer vehicles, safer drivers, safer speeds. So it fits in with our council plan, fits in, that fits in with the state and the, and the national one as well. This was sent out to, I think it was over five hundred, five hundred submissions we had, that included the CFA and the police. We had a nine percent positive response, so people are for it. So, we can change little bits of it before it goes ahead later in the year if we get the funding, so I'm a hundred percent behind it.
Thank you councillor Howe. Are there any other speakers for or against this motion as it's been put?
Mr Mayor?
Yes, councillor White?
I suppose for me, I, I, I have a question, I guess.
Okay, question, yes.
And that is in relation to, if we happen to be, oh well, let's put it another way. There's a couple of million dollars on offer, if we're, if we're fortunate. And I suppose the introduction of these forty K zones, and I concur with all the remarks that have been made in terms of, of the purpose and that, but how is it going to be monitored and managed? Does that mean more troops on the deck to be able to supervise the, the people, you know, sort of, those who are not complying? And, or is that part of the submission?
Yeah, through you, Mr Mayor, so in terms of the implementation, that would be undertaken by ourselves in terms of the works. In terms of the ongoing monitoring, particularly in relation to, to road safety and traffic speeds and like, would be a role of Victoria Police, so we don't have a, a role in doing that, other than potentially putting up things like the VMS boards that you see that remind people about what their speeds are in terms of really education, that's really where our role is limited. Would be left to the police in terms of monitoring compliance with those speed limits. But certainly as part of the project, we can take that on board and have a talk to them about the, the role that they might play in the future in terms of helping us with that.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Any other speakers to this motion? Councillor McFarlane to close?
Yeah, just briefly, Mr Mayor, I think it's, it might be worthwhile just pointing out that we do currently have forty kilometre zones within our CBDs. So this process is really just about expanding, expanding those areas to take, take account of, of what the dynamics of the various streets are. of the various streets are. And I think what we'll see from what I've read in the report with some of the treatments, it's really going to, rather than just encourage people to stick to their 40 kilometres, it's gonna force them to stick to it. And I think if you look in Mawr at the moment, there's been a couple of treatments done in recent times in Buckley Street where it slows people down at the intersection and I think it's really proved to be very successful, particularly from a pedestrian point of view. So I think this project in itself will encourage, there's got to be some education works done as well to get our drivers onside, but I believe that the project in its entirety will slow the traffic and will allow people to have safer movement through towns. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. So we've had speakers, we need to vote on this councillors. All those in favour as the motion has been put? Looking around the room and myself is unanimous. Thank you councillors for that. It's 15.5. We move on to 15.6. Note, there was declared councillor Gibson and councillor Harriman with conflicts or interests as they were noted. And they've left the room. You can be pedantic, we like pendants. All right, so do we have a mover who would like to make an amendment there?
I'd like to move, Mr Mayor, with the latter's put on the end of Evans.
Includes, include and to include work on Evans Street mobile. Thank you. A mover and a seconder, a slight amendment. Any opposition councillors? Councillor McFarlane, would you like to speak to this?
Briefly, Mr Mayor. This recommendation really is just providing council with the opportunity to re-tweak the road rehab programme for 1920, taking advantage of additional funding that we've been successful in receiving. So it's really just doing a bit of a jiggle and a juggle to ensure that again we get maximum value for our dollar and consider the additional funds that we've received. Thank you.
Was that a rate construction team, was it?
Yes, I think that, thank you. We are gonna note that in the minutes of jiggle and juggle. It's an engineering team, thank you. Councillor Middlemas, would you like to bring a sensible?
I think jiggle and juggle just been finished.
All right, okay. Thank you. Are there any other councillors who wish to speak to this? Councillor McFarlane, would you like to close? All right, we have had speakers, so we do need to vote. So all those in favour, all hands are up, so that has gone unanimously. Thank you councillors. We will bring our other councillors back in, in councillor Harriman and councillor Gibson as we move to 16.1. Just wait for you to take your seats. Councillor Gibson, I know you're still standing, so you have something for us?
Yes please. May I move a procedural deferral for two meetings, please?
Procedural deferral for two meetings. Do we have a seconder? Yeah, councillor Middlemas as a seconder to defer. And then any opposition to this procedural deferral?
More questions?
Yes, I think councillor Gibson would like to speak to it.
Why do they defer?
All right, so you can have a question to the CEO on what the implications of the deferral will be, but. So what do you like to know?
That's if you like. If you can answer.
So the status quo would remain rather than what was proposed in the report, which from an operational perspective doesn't have a major impact at this point.
Right, so councillor Gibson, you're moving a procedural deferral and councillor Middlemas was seconding. Any opposition to this procedural deferral? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak to it? Nope, okay. As long as there's no opposition, straight down, straight to the vote. All those in favour of a procedural deferral? Unanimous. Thank you very much councillors. Thank you very much for that. We're moving to 17.1, the authorisation of council officer under the Planning Environment Act of 1987. Councillor Middlemas.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Although I don't think I know Joseph Frieden, I'm happy to move this.
You may have met him before. Is there a seconder?
Yes.
I think councillor White beat you to it, councillor Howe. Any opposition? Councillor Middlemas.
No, thank you.
No speaker? Councillor White. All right, no speakers, no opposition. That has been carried unanimously. Thank you very much councillors. 17.2 is the finance report for December 2019. Do I have a mover for this? Councillor White is moving. Second and councillor McFarlane. Any opposition councillors? Councillor White, would you like to speak to this?
I think, Mr Mayor, it's important to take the opportunity to acknowledge. We just might grab a mic and talk to the councillor.
Yes, I just wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge the performance of the council in relation to the production of this report for us and this is the second quarter for the financial year and as is indicated through the comprehensive report, that we're on track or financially we're in a favourable position at the moment, but obviously it's a tough gig for our financial gurus in this organisation here to keep the balance, if you want to call it that, because of the way in which sometimes the funds come in and sometimes the funds don't come in as early as was anticipated. But in terms of cash flow and the way we're positioned currently financially is in, we're in a really good position. But I just really want to make sure that people of our community take the opportunity to have a look at the document that is produced and to familiarise themselves with the content and understand that it is not, it is a big business that this council's in and the financial implications of what it is we're involved in does have a huge impact on our community and it's in good hands.
Thank you councillor White. Councillor McFarlane as a seconder.
No, thank you.
Are there any other speakers to this motion? Councillor White, you get to close. They've had speakers though, so we need to put this to the vote. All those in favour? Unanimously, thank you councillors. We move to 17.3, which is the tabling of a report from the Chair of the Audit and Risk Committee. Councillor McFarlane moving, do I have a seconder?
Second.
Councillor White, any opposition to this? Councillor McFarlane.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As has been a requirement in the past, the Chairperson of the Audit and Risk Committee has met with the council on an annual basis to give an oversight on the activities of that committee and we were privileged to have that discussion with the Chair of the Audit Committee in December. It is appropriate that this document be a public document and hence it has come forward tonight so that the community can also see what the Audit and Risk Management Committee, Risk Committee has achieved over the past 12 months. This council's very fortunate in having three external members on that committee who are highly skilled in audit and I think from my point of view certainly to sit back and get a report from the Chair, who's one of those three external members, gives me certainly a great lot of confidence that we're running along pretty well. So I think it's important, as I said, for the public to see what the Audit and Risk Committee are commenting on and here is that opportunity. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Councillor White, an opportunity to speak as a seconder?
Thank you. Yes, I concur with the remarks of councillor McFarlane and also again, it's an opportunity to acknowledge the staff of the organisation here as well because obviously when we have these Audit and Risk Committee meetings, there are actions that come out of those meetings and the document that we've had, a bit like our council agenda for a while, but it's gradually diminishing in size and, but that's thanks to the efforts of your team, Mr CEO, that is really helping to make that happen and the support they give the external members of Audit and Risk Committee is very much valued and appreciated. And this Audit and Risk Committee has, as councillor McFarlane did indicate, we're very fortunate to have those folk involved with us. They've got a broad array of experience and skills and not only in this setting, but from their experience in other settings that they can apply to our situation here at the, at Latrobe City. And I invite all of our councillors to come and join us. The opportunity's there at the next Audit and Risk Committee meeting.
Thank you councillor White. Are there any other speakers to this motion, for or against? Then councillor McFarlane, you have an opportunity to close. We've had speakers, so we need to put this to the vote. All those in favour? Unanimously carried. Thank you councillors. We move to 17.4, which is the tabling of the Assembly of Councillors for the period of 18, November to 18, December 2019. Councillor Gibson moving. Councillor Gibson, thank you. Do I have a seconder for this? Councillor Harriman, thank you. Any opposition? No opposition, councillor Gibson?
Sedentary.
Councillor Harriman, would you like an opportunity to speak? We've had no speakers and no opposition, that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much councillors. We move on to 17.5. Oh, two up at the same time. So moved over here councillor Middlemas and councillor O'Callaghan as a seconder? Yes, thank you. Any opposition? Councillor Middlemas.
Although councillor O'Callaghan's speaking, I think you're not close.
Lovely. Take that as a reserve. Councillor O'Callaghan, lead us through.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Our township committees of Balarra, Glengarry, Jundgaby, Trelgan South, Tyres, Yalaw North and Yonara, although independent of council, do receive funding from us as they do from other entities for a range of activities that they deliver within their own catchments, but also as a collective group and they do a range of work together as well and they certainly join us on a regular basis to discuss a range of issues impacting and affecting our small towns. A lot of the government agencies, including our own, require that there be public liability insurance provided by organisations as part of grant processes. It's certainly part of a range of grants that we have available and the state and federal governments are much the same. It's been identified that some of our small town committees do not have public liability insurance in place, not because of any lack of interest in risk and oversight and ensuring the safety of their membership or town members per se, but because the cost of them undertaking the insurance obligation exceeds the capacity and some instances actually can, outstrips the capacities of the grants to actually pay for themselves. So the township committees whilst having every good intention in relation to the grants that they apply for and the work that they undertake, have found that public liability insurance has been significantly cost prohibitive. A number of our small town township committees were actually established through the Community Building Initiative in 2010 and it was part of a local government initiative fostered through some seed funding with the state government. So we do have a level of obligation to ensure that there is support for our small townships. This report is to recommend to councillors that we provide a much easier level of access and support in relation to public liability insurance for our small towns and just make the whole process and affordable contributions supported by council available to them so they're not in any way disadvantaged in relation to grants and other activities that they undertake within the community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor O'Callaghan. Are there any other speakers to this motion? Councillor Howe.
Just to follow on from councillor O'Callaghan, the small towns committees, they are there to assist us, they help with planning of what their town wants. They act as a conduit between their community and for us. As councillor O'Callaghan says, some are underinsured, some are overinsured, some have no insurance at all, some are paying two, three times more than what we can get it for. What this can do is for $7,000, we can take that problem off their hands, they'll be properly insured, they can sleep well at night, they're fully covered as a committee and they can have access to government grants. So yeah, I think this is a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Howe. Are there any other speakers to this motion? Councillor White.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. In my particular situation as a South Ward councillor, we've got Yonara and Balarra in this category and so in terms of their situation, I think that they'd be very grateful for the support of this council if it's possible for us to see our way clear to provide that funding support. And I think that the other thing that goes with it too, I think that perhaps there'll be, you know, in terms of the seven groups on the one policy, that maybe there's some potential sort of savings to be made in that regard too. And so I think that in that context, it's very worthy of support and just anyway, we'll leave it at that.
Thank you councillor White. Are there any other speakers to this motion? And councillor Middlemas, so you have the opportunity to close the argument.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Excellent speakers, I endorse everything they say. Thank you.
Well spoken councillor Middlemas. We have had speakers, so we do need to put this to the vote. Those in favour? Unanimously carried. Thank you very much councillors. Move to item eighteen. Item eighteen, I need to do my articulation before meetings. Item eighteen is urgent business. I believe there is no urgent business councillors? No, there are no urgent business items? We move to nineteen, where we will move to close the meeting to the public. Happy to move councillor Gibson, councillor Harriman. Any opposition councillors? No opposition, no speakers, carried unanimously. We are closing. Thank you very much to the people in the gallery and to the people on Facebook. We'll take a break now and join us for a cup of tea if you want to. Thank you very much councillors.